You know, Josh.
So I'll try to keep.
Okay. You have a lot of this talk.
Just a second. Okay, so Mayor, Council, thank you all for being here. We're going to essentially revisit some of the CIP information that you would have heard in the workshop. But we're going to dive into a little bit on the financing aspects of it, provide a little bit more other robust overview of the projects as well. We should have in front of us at this point a physical draft document CIP. I would just ask that during the presentation, just resist the urge to kind of thumb through it, and then we'll deliver some information that helps actualize what to assume in the document. Then, of course, once we're over, feel free to thumb through your questions and fire all the questions. So. So this is a slide that you'd like. And I'm kind of, so we have the screen here, and I've got the one that you were saying, no. So I'm going to be kind of dual tasking here. This is a slide that you would have seen in the past, and you've seen it in prior versions of budgets, prior versions of CIPs. In fact, I know you did when we talked operating budget in October. We just simply put a box around a different box on here. What I do want to emphasize with this slide, and really all of the plans you see on here from kind of a macro view, is everything on this slide is complementary. This isn't really a hierarchy, no one is more important than the other. Of course, everything finds its way down to the adopted levy and charges. But as we make adjustments to the comprehensive plan, as we make adjustments to the TID plan, we have to go make changes to assumptions and funding sources and funding uses that we have in other plans. So for instance, if comprehensive plan is updated, and there's a new project that wasn't in a previous version, that may not be consistent with the current CIP, we're obviously having to make some changes there. And that's going to flow through to anticipated uses of levy. It may impact anticipated uses of user fees. And to the extent that we make changes to things like TID plans, perhaps we have a development that comes along that requires some unprocedural, perhaps more uses of finances than were originally anticipated. That impacts things like the ability for the TID to repay general fund advances and admin allocations that are paid by the TIDS to the general fund. So that in turn then has a trickle effect on the general fund and affects things like assumptions about how much funding is available, and we have to make changes on the expense side. So the main point here is just, everything is complementary. And then moving on to just some quick definitions of what you'll see in the capital improvement plan. So capital items are defined as things that have value of $5,000 or more and a useful life of over one year. If it doesn't meet these criteria, nine times out of 10, those are going to be expenses that will provide for the operating budget. We do prepare a 10-year capital improvement plan, but the emphasis is on first five years of that plan, in this case, 2024 through 2028. In particular, in November, you would be asked to appropriate funding just for the first year of the plan, or 2024. Years two through five are there for planning purposes. And then when we get to year six and beyond, those years do tend to get a little bit more subject to change, it's possible, for lack of a better word. But we do want to try to maintain a long-term view to ensure that we maintain fiscal sustainability. I'm not going to spend too long on this next slide, but these are the CIP themes. I don't think they really changed from the last time. So we still, every request that we get in the CIP process, we're really putting through a filter of financial state of the game. And we make this work through a variety of different financial measures. We're also providing for projects in the five-year plan that help us achieve long-term strategic growth. And then, of course, continued investment in infrastructure. We want to make sure that we're able to provide for development that in turn adds net new construction to the community, that in turn allows us to increase our base portion of our tax levy to meet ongoing needs. So let's talk about city funds a little bit. So there's going to be a lot of funding sources in the CIP that you receive. There's a lot of different fund types that reorganize all the projects into. So first and foremost, our capital funds. We have two of those, a general capital fund and a capital and equipment capital fund. The primary funding sources for those funds are the tax levy, things like grants, donations, developer contributions, in some cases, fund reserves, to the extent that we do have some of that available, like vehicle and equipment fund, which is fund for 20. And then borrowing. Our utility funds, we finance projects in our utility funds with things like charges for services to ratepayers, impact fees when new developments occur. So those are one-time revenues that we do try to apply to one-time uses through the CIP. And then borrowing, of course. With our TIDS, we have tax increment revenue that comes in from developments within the TID districts, or the TIP districts rather. And then in some cases, of course, borrowing for those as well, in fund moments, which I know is something we spent some time talking about recently. And then our special revenue funds are things like charges for services, tax levy, or funds like the library, which is the special revenue fund, grants and donations. And then our internal service funds rely on internal allocations to other city funds that then in turn may be getting funded by any one of the developed sources. So take our IT fund, for example, that has an internal allocation that it assesses against the general fund and the general funding source for that transfer that is tax levy dollars. So let's start to zoom in on some of the high-level finances in the CIP. So this slide compares it between the amount of levy that the fiscal plan originally contemplated and then the amount of levy support that we actually have planned through the five-year CIP. So as you see, there's quite a bit of a difference there in 2024. And this is because the city, we're in a position to be able to leverage the American Rescue Plan Act money that we received, of the city's central levy use there. And then in subsequent years, there's actually less levy support that we're using for projects in those years than what was originally contemplated in the fiscal plan now. The current fiscal plan only runs through 2026. So 2027 and 2028, the amounts are really just there as placeholders. Had we continued with the same levy support that was originally contemplated for 26. But those amounts will be subject to change when we do our next fiscal planning update. And the reason that you see less levy support there than was contemplated in the fiscal plan is inflation's been running highly. So to maintain our existing level of services in our operating funds, we require more levy, more expenses budgeted than would have been the case when we originally put the 22 through 26 fiscal plan together. So more levy requirement to maintain existing level of operating services, unfortunately, means less levy available for capital accounts for cash financing. So that's what we're really talking about here is cash financing and capital costs. Just really quick, before I jump into the next slide, I do just want to mention with the fiscal plan, because that is something that we're now starting to jump into planning for, putting together in earnest, is one of the features of the fiscal plan that I think is kind of interesting, that's really cool that we do here from a fiscal sustainability perspective, is we allocate our uses of levy in five main buckets. In over each of the five years of the fiscal plan, we make sure that our use of levy for each of those five buckets meets state levy limit requirements that we're actually able to do it and keep an eye on how much levy we're allocating across those five tiers. So those five buckets are cash financing for the CIP, what we're looking at here. The next one is levy requirements for debt service for borrowings that we need, that we plan for through the CIP. And then the other three buckets are operating. So there's kind of a street maintenance, which is really part of the general fund, but we call that out separately in the fiscal plan. There's a bucket for that. There's one for the rest of the general fund, and then one for the library. So if Council were to propose no changes to what's in the draft CIP and say, go for it, these numbers essentially become fixed. And one of those five buckets, one of those five boxes, we'd be able to check for allocated levy in fiscal plan, is then set, and we'd be able to move on to looking at the other four. So let's talk about the next one. And I'm going to reference my notes, because this is kind of dense. So. So this is another one of those five buckets we talked about. This is general obligation borrowing that's proposed through the five-year CIP. So this chart provides the projected or estimated amount of general obligation indebtedness over each of the five years of the CIP. So this isn't the levy requirement. This is total general obligation indebtedness at the end of each year. So the amount of GO indebtedness or general obligation indebtedness in 2024 includes $8 million in borrowing for the biosolids project and $9.5 million in borrowing, general obligation borrowing for various man valley, for various components of the man valley project. So the city has historically issued some revenue-backed debt as general obligation borrowing, and the intent is to continue that practice. It is a common practice in municipalities, especially municipalities in Wisconsin. They do this for two reasons. One, it allows utilities to take advantage of more favorable interest rates by borrowing on a GO basis versus a revenue basis. From a credit rating, from a creditor or bondholder perspective, you're taking advantage of a broader, I guess, repayment source base by having it backed by a property tax base than the ratepayer base. So I do want to point out, it's really important that even if we're borrowing utility debt as general obligation debt, that's not included in the tax levy. The utilities, the ratepayers, still pay that debt service, even if it's general obligation debt. So just because we call it general obligation debt, doesn't mean automatically that that's tax levy debt. That would be, you're ultimately backing that debt by the full payment credit of the community. And that's why you're able to take advantage of more favorable interest rates. The other reason, in addition to more favorable interest rates for the utilities, is that, as we talked about during the October budget workshops, doing it this way, this method does allow cities in Wisconsin to leverage the state's levy limit formula to their advantage to better keep pace with meeting inflation spending requirements through the tax levy. So this is a common practice for cities, villages and towns in Wisconsin. The important thing that I want to call out here is the planned borrowing over the next five years. The city, over the next five years, we don't estimate, now again, these are estimates, of total indebtedness. We would not exceed 50% of the state's indebtedness limit. So the state actually has a general obligation debt limit that cities, villages and towns have to adhere to. That's calculated as 5% of the community's equalized value. And so that is, that number, that limit's getting updated every year based on growth in the community. So more growth means more capacity. In our model here, and again, all estimates good, but in our model, we're assuming 1% growth of that equalized value. Now, our experience lately has been much better than that. So we do feel like this is a conservative forecast. And the more growth that we have, the more capacity we have, and the lower of a percent of the state's indebtedness limit you'll see there. But this is, this is a conservative forecast. Then last, you get down to the amount of general obligation debt that's revenue-backed. Again, because utilities are actually paying their, their shares, their general obligation debt. So to calculate how much you actually need to place on the levy, or how much the total indebtedness paid for by the tax levy, you subtract the revenue-backed GO debt off. And that bottom number there is the total amount of general obligation indebtedness that the tax levy would support. Now, that's not the annual pay, again, that's total indebtedness that the levy backs. So move into the next slide then.
Josh, that doesn't include firewalls.
This does not. The plan contemplates that borrowing in 2028. So, sorry, so total indebtedness here would include firewall. Payments, general obligation payments aren't, because we borrow in 2028, we don't get payments until 29. So to see the, to see the impact in of your annual levy requirement for debt service, that's what we have here. So again, another debt slot I'm going to comment, own in on my notes here. So the estimated debt service payments for each year, we forecasted based on current market interest rates, so subject to change. And the projection is intended to provide some insight into the general direction that debt service may go over the next five years, based on the proposed CIP. The projected mill rate, which is the second row from the very bottom there with a couple of asterisks next to it, the projected mill rate is calculated using the city's 2022 assessed value, and then we inflate that by 1% each year. Now, again, that's, that's likely conservative, given our recent experiences. What I do want to point out there is, based on recent experiences, if we were to see 2%, 3%, maybe even 4% growth again, like we just did this last year, that mill rate effect is going to, that's going to blow. Because essentially, how you calculate your mill rate is your levy requirement divided by your assessed value. The math is really quite simple. So your numerators, based on our forecast here, are going to stay the same. That's what we believe, well, that's not what we necessarily believe, that's what we estimate our debt requirement for, our levy requirement for debt service will be over the next five years. But that denominator will change. We're only assuming that denominator increases by 1%, when in fact it may increase by 2% or 3% or 4%. So a larger denominator means a smaller output. So the mill rate would actually be lower. But this is what we believe to be a conservative estimate. And then as far as percent of total levies concerned, it's anywhere from 15% to 16% per year. Now, similar to the cash financing required for the capital projects in the fiscal plan, there's a target for that. And as I mentioned a couple of slides ago, we're lower than that in what we're actually proposing. We're similarly lower than the target here in terms of the percentage of, of the tax levy we want going to debt service. The 22 through 26 fiscal plan provided for a target of 20% of levy going to debt service. So we're lower than that, which means more of the share is going to operations. And again, that's due to the effects of inflation. So these things can change. Obviously, Council, you're going to have every opportunity to thumb through the document when we're done, propose changes to us, and those changes may affect what you're seeing here. But as proposed in front of you today, this is what we estimate the impact will be. So then kind of shifting here, it's out of general obligation debt, it's out of levy. And the one thing I want to mention too on that last slide, I guess, is conversely, if you were to recommend no changes, and we proceed this way, the cash financing piece of our tax levy for capital projects, the portion of our tax levy that goes to debt service for capital projects, those two out of five buckets of how we allocate the levy in the fiscal plan, if you recommend no changes to us, those would be essentially done. And in the fiscal plan, we would then be moving on to those other three buckets, the general fund, the street maintenance, and the library. And so that's kind of the iterative way to build this. So then when it comes to utility considerations, staff consider the following. Obviously, first and foremost are the staff requests, the expense requests. Then we turn to some internal forecasts that we maintain that are intended to provide really more macro level financial trend projections. And then we look at what we estimate, and again, forecasts, projections, estimations, but we look at what we think available future liquidity or catch-on hand would be or comparable for our utility funds, to determine how much cash financing we feel we can accommodate based on the staff requests. And then debt service is then considered as an alternative through some of the cash financing, because you don't, you don't want to draw that working capital down too far, because you can provide for unprecedented operating expenses that may come up. So it's a balance between how much do we think we can cash finance? How much do we need to put onto debt service? Which obviously is great, because you're spreading that cost out over 10 to 20 years. But of course, that comes with an enormous cost that you're now paying over that period as well. So there's a balance. So the city does have both working capital and revenue-to-debt coverage benchmarks that we consider when we take those staff requests and attempt to try to accommodate all the costs in the five years and structure when those projects would occur. So we seek to maintain 90 days of working capital in our utility funds and revenue-to-debt coverage of 1.5x. So for any debt service payment in any one year, we want revenue that's 1.5x that number. Now, that's our internal benchmark. We do have bond covenants that actually externally restrict us to 1.25x coverage.
Just going to ask, how did you come up with 1.5, just to make sure?
Yeah, I think it's essentially to just, you know, stay with our, with our bond covenant requirements and then some.
Okay.
To give us a little more, a little more cushion down and the minimal requirement, basically. And so. You know, because the community's experiencing rapid growth right now, if not unprecedented growth, some of the macro financial forecasts that we have, you know, those are really based on historic trends. And as these, the unprecedented growth occurs, as we're seeing inflation that's, you know, once every two to three decades occurs, we thought we would seek out some outside assistance to help us with conducting what we call cost of service studies. Now, the city's done it before, and we'll be doing them again using WPPI for the electric utility and Trilogy Consulting, which I know you're all familiar with, from as recently as our discussions about the biosolids facility. We're re-engaging with them to look at the water and sewer utilities, with the hopes being that they can kind of take our macro financial trends and dialogue it a little further with some more specific forecasts that shape into your county's fund pressing and growth and customer base, because those are, those are challenging the forecast score. Question for you, would that include, and I know we talked about this before, but transportation utility theme? And where are we at, as that in the courts in Wisconsin, you know?
I'm not, I'd have to do the research to get current, certain case law, and I'm not aware of. And does this include a transfer?
Is there other questions that we, would that include something like that? We haven't assumed any new retailers as part of the CIP forecast. So future adjustments to the CIP based on some combination of findings of these cost of service studies, ongoing customer growth, you know, we may require some future adjustments to what are the out years of this again. Again, what you'll be asked to appropriate in November is for the first year of the plan of 2024. The further out you go in the plan, the more sensitive changes those are because of inflation, because of other macroeconomic external factors that may influence what we choose to do through work. So there will be opportunities to make some adjustments with better information. And Council, one of the things I'd like to just kind of humbly place on your radar is, is the possibility of some future rate discussions for our utilities. Because we continue to experience the effects, and I talked to Kevin about this quite a bit. He's nodding at me, you know, inflation and long look times that require us to, you know, need more inventory on hand, because we don't know when we may get some of the things we order to accommodate demand when development occurs. So we, we are experiencing some effects of those dynamics. And so, you know, we may have conversations in the not-so-est future about, about rates and adjustments to the CIP based on these cost of service studies. But certainly, right now, what's in the CIP, we feel common, we feel confident, rather, that the utilities can accommodate what's proposed.
So that wouldn't necessarily reflect a day rate, Ken's talking about that, just studying on energy usage.
Yeah, it would be a pretty comprehensive look. So I know one of the things we've talked about is, is maybe look more of a, more of the base fee portion of the charge. Do we look to increase that and have the usage-based cost? Less of the, the, the only word I can think of, but less of the share of the revenue coming from that and more from the base. There's going to be a pretty comprehensive analysis of those sorts of questions to help us understand what we might be looking at over the five years.
Ken, so do you think we might have to look at that, the rates changing?
Well, some of the information that was shared during the biosolids presentation, I know, suggested that as we get closer to 2030, maybe 2027, 2028, we may be looking at that for sewer utility. Electric and water, we're not as sure about. We're, we need to, we need to wait and look at the, the data a little more closely and have some further conversations with WPPI Trilogy about those. But I do recall the sewer cost of service, well, it wasn't cost of service study, but when you kind of did a forecast for the biosolids project, the further out we went, we started to look like we were going to require some sort of a, some sort of an increase. But I noticed Kevin would point out, had we stayed in the consortium, that would have been the case anyways.
Go on, question.
Right, so we may have actually staved it off a little bit by having gone the route we're going with our biosolids facility.
We just had, electric rate case was just done last year, Kevin?
No, that seems like last year, I think it was four years ago now.
No.
Yeah.
It went to 14.
Or 23, it might have been, it was right around COVID time. Our authorized rate, just to provide some context, our authorized rate of return right now is 4.9%. Looking at rate cases, rate case applications that have occurred over the last 18 to 24 months, in only one of like 20 cases was a, was a rate of return as low as 4.9% authorized. Everything else is 6% to 7% rate of return. So that's kind of the current PSC benchmark. And I think that once upon a time, it would have been accurate to say we may have been on the higher end of rate of return now, some, you know, we are second on the whole end of what's been getting approved lately. So then moving into, and I think this may be a refresher for you all, but looking at the, the five-year totals in the capital improvement plan by fund or department, how we choose to organize and categorize the expenses. All funds, all departments totaled over five years is 79.2 million. Utilities has the, the largest share of, of the expense of the plan expenses, budgeted expenses, followed by community development for things like the Kenny Corridor project. And then followed up on by our tax increment districts, facilities, engineering, and then, and then you can see the, the rest there. So on the right's just kind of a graphical representation of, of what you see with those projects. This next slide gets into the proposed funding sources for it. So you can see that borrowing is the largest share of the proposed funding sources. Now, alternative sources, because that's kind of a vague catch-all term, but is such a large number. I thought I would just share a little bit more information about what that is. That includes beginning balance in our vehicles and equipment fund. It includes developer contributions to projects that are more development-oriented. It includes impact fees. Again, these are one-time revenues we collect off of developments. There are five of the different impact fees we collect off of permits. And then funding partnerships, such as the US Army Corps of Engineers. The reason that is portrayed as an alternative source and not a grant revenue is, frankly, it's kind of a distinction without a difference, I suppose. But, you know, grant revenues would imply that the cash comes to us to then spend. In this case, it's the Army Corps of Engineers are really kind of running the project, and we have a, a share of that partnership. So we categorized it as an alternative source. You were to recategorize that instead as a grant revenue, that would actually be the largest share of funding in the CIP. So this is a fairly grant-heavy capital improvement plan from a funding source perspective. And then jumping into some specific projects, and I believe these are just refreshers of information you've seen, but the Kenny Corridor implementation represents $26 million. Now, that's through 2029, so 2030, rather. So two of the years for Kenny Corridor actually exist outside of the five-year plan. But again, that's part of why we also do kind of sort of softer 10-year plan. If some of these projects are so long duration, that we want to have some idea what the longer-term effect is, even if you are literally essentially being asked to approve a five-year capital improvement plan. The base construction occurring from 2026 through 2020, 2030, does include the Riverwalk. And I did want to point out that general obligation bonds as a funding source is for non-hydro, non-restoration related expenses. So I understand that this council is already committed to not utilizing property tax, property taxes as a funding source for hydro and restoration of the area that the hydro's are removed. And direct with staff to implement it as such. And that's what we're proposing in this plan, is to implement it as you, as you directed us to. So that general obligation borrowing would be for more of the post-rumble, post-restoration amenity creation projects that are part of the Kenny Corridor plant. The fire station is included for $8.5 million. New well number seven is included for $1.9 million. This is a combination of water, in this case, revenue bonds and water utility cash financing. So as I mentioned, there is this balance of trying to determine how much we feel comfortable cash financing versus debt financing. In some cases, you'll see that split come down to individual projects. So we believe that for this project in '27 and '28, we can cash finance a portion of it. But ultimately, the larger share of that would be financed through revenue bonds. But ultimately, the larger share of that would be financed through revenue bonds. And some of these decisions, when we make them, we plan for those certain way. And then when it comes time to actually borrow, um, based on the advice of our financial advisor elements, we may, it may end up looking slightly different. We may defray some of the borrowing with a certain, with a different amount of cash financing to borrow for a different amount. So we plan for it a certain way based on our models, based on our forecasts. And then we make, we make decisions ultimately when we, when we get there. And then Main Street reconstruction is included here as well for seven point six million dollars with, uh, planning, design and certain land acquisitions in twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, uh, phased construction then in twenty twenty nine. And you can see the funding breakdown below. Um, this next slide is a new one for you all, but I just wanted to call out, without going into real great detail for any one of them, a variety of different projects that are larger in nature that are in the C I P, just to give you, before you kind of dive into the document, a sense for the variety that's in here. So we do have, um, implementation of the library facility study over five years, but we do have that proposed to be entirely funded with donations. Uh, the Electric North Substation Transformer is another two point five million with design in twenty twenty four. And then we think possibly construction in twenty twenty eight, but this is really development dependent. So we wouldn't proceed with this expense unless we had, um, I'm gonna look at Kevin. Primarily driven by what occurs in Van Valley. There are additional benefits to having that north substation certainly for system redundancy and discapacity. But the no, or the go no-go decision would primarily be driven by what occurs in Van Valley. Um, Kevin, I think I said.
Low, 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 low.
So it depends on what, um, occurs, what specific types of development occur there. Uh, and then there are just smaller, ongoing, regular electric transformer replacements that we provide for through our C I P. That's not new. Um, I believe that's probably been in just about every iteration of our C I P for years now. And then, and we do believe we can cash finance that. Then there's some sewer main slip lining. Um, so there's two different types of lining you do with mains. You can either cure, cure and replace pipeline mains or slip line them. And in this case, we've elected to go with the slip lining, um, over five years. I believe Jason called out vehicle replacements. This is just assorted, um, a variety of needed necessary vehicle replacements over the next five years that we're funding through some combination of, uh, cash on hand available in our vehicle and equipment, uh, capital fund. And then utility cash on hand. Then there's fire portable radios, combination of grants, a transfer from the general fund and rural fire. Um, and then water, ongoing A M I implementation or advanced metering infrastructure, reconstruction of East Division Street, streetlights and boulevard trees in Tid Ten, Paulson Road, streetlights, Tid Seventeen, City Hall solar panels and a stormwater Hoffman Basin flood study. So the C I Ps are always really comprehensive. Anything from libraries, electric, sewer, vehicles, fire, um, Tid, City Hall, stormwater. So that's just a sense of what all you'll find in here, please, um, crack open the books. So some projects of council interest that were not included in the current C I P. Hoffman Park Master Plan Implementation, which includes things like parking lots, new pavilions, softball field improvements, a new entrance road. Glen Park Master Plan Implementation, Phase Two, things like pool, um, kind of reconstruction, ice rink, east shelter warming house, kayak launch and drop. Public Works Building Expansion and Renovation, it excludes both design and construction. Additional dog parks, maybe plural, um, downtown master plan implementation, other than the Main Street reconstruction, because that we would have seen that across slides bill for seven and a half million, I believe, and then downtown alley upgrades. So last slide then, um, this is the draft C I P. Um, so we will continue to work on finalizing this for the next several weeks. But of course, um, if you so desire, we do have the opportunity for a second workshop. Um, we of course welcome your feedback. You have the opportunity to indicate any stop signs or suggestions for alternatives over the coming weeks. Um, and then ultimately, as I've mentioned a couple of times now, funding sources and uses for twenty twenty four would be appropriated in the November with the rest of the plan there as, um, just that it's a plan. But there of course are certain projects in the document that are multi-year in nature. So once, once we start in twenty twenty four, maybe difficult stop. So, um, and again, when it comes to fiscal planning, we're going to transition over to prep, preparing that for you for later this summer, early fall. And if you don't have any changes for us, some of the, some of the levy uses that, as far as the allocation of levy, this isn't a fiscal plan would be, would be fixed and set. So thank you.
I wanted to ask some applause a little bit, Scott, I was kind of above the break. I did find the stats, it's, uh, it's now we're getting older. What we, that was exactly about three years ago when that rate went into effect. And it would have been a little bit earlier in twenty twenty, if you remember COVID, we decided to delay it.
Okay, so remember that.
And.
And water was recently too, wasn't it?
Uh, that was about six years ago. That's good. We had a real.
I think electric was the most recent. Probably probably three million.
Yes. Okay, so yeah, so just time to lie.
Appreciate you making the way to Kevin, thanks.
Started working out that four and a half years ago. You don't need to follow up, Kevin.
You know, I would, I'm taking the attention. And when I said it, I'm like, there's no way down to Long Island.
What? I noticed that there was no, um, mention of cleaning up of Saint Frey Pond in there. We've tried these grants in the past, we really need to get this done. Is that something that we can put into this that's reasonable, uh, when a grant opportunity arises?
Um, I'm sorry, which project?
The Saint Frey Pond.
That is a project we could put in, staff is not recommending it because the current, the latest, I guess, project that we did, we feels at service for, for five to ten to fifteen years of additional time. So that we didn't do the platinum plan for Saint Frey Pond. If you recall, we kind of had a grant application and we went through that. And then we'd already fund that larger pond reconstruct. But we, it has been totally reconstructed and opened up and so you know how that kind of really is we do that. The next, or expanding phase, but that could, there is benefits to doing it. Even with the current pond, we would have more, that's okay, I don't want you too far. We'd likely have more solids and T M D Ls and all that. I mean, we'd have more benefits with a bigger banner, simple pond. But we're not thinking that that's a priority given for council, all the other stuff we have to get accomplished. And the fact that stormwater will likely have, of all the estimates in the whole C I P, the one I was, uh, was the least conservative and most probably inaccurate, um, or at least likely to be accurate over the next five years, is the stormwater revenue for. So I'm kind of recommending counsel, assume most of the stormwater enhancements are going to go into the Kenny Corridor with the whole downtown Riverwalk and all the outfalls we are going into the river downtown. But the council could have the Saint Frey Pond. I don't know what you call it, phase two or expanded.
I think it's reasonable to say if there was a grant that we could practice in yet, that would be a good option to look at.
We likely eliminated our, our, um, competitiveness for the grants by doing that project we did. Cause we did get some, and so now we've, you know, if it was a one, if it was a ten being the highest and one being the lowest, if it was rated as a two or a three, you know, we've now taken it to a seven or an eight. So it's, the, the R funds typically one of those higher impact, does that make sense?
Yeah, kind of.
Doesn't make me happy.
Make suggestion.
They're not gonna, they're, they are unlikely in competitive process to give us the grant funding when it's, even though it's maybe marginally the same impact. They're likely going to outwork a community that has a really dirty, yes, or an area that's not being treated very well. And I would, I, I can say with good confidence that project we did at St Croix is made both on paper and I think we'll find out in practice, has made a big impact on the quality of the water going into the river there. And nobody's correcting me from staff, so I think.
From it, in our perspective, they are, they're scoring rubrics and they end up not awarding grants to certain communities that all just follow the line of what they can fund. And essentially they just shift you up as projects that were funded occurred. They've got some units in bottom of the line and everybody just kind of moves their way up the lead. So we may not, just Scott's point, be competitive for a while because we addressed it in their eyes.
So the council has the ability to, obviously we call, alter, modify, add, subtract, invent new projects that we haven't talked about. Um, it's, but this can tend to have kind of a whole great anticlimactic approach to spending eighty million dollars. So this C I P is heavily driven by projects that council has already taken all action on. It left little room to, to add a whole bunch. Um, we've tried to, based on the feedback that we received from council, our resolutions or ordinances or other, um, we've tried to reflect that. So we still haven't got boards committees and commission process down very well at all. So admittedly, we're essentially relying on council reps and staff input about the priorities of the committees, commissions, advisory rooms. We still haven't figured out a very good pay. Or, or maybe, maybe the better way to say is we haven't made effort to substantially get that feedback incorporated. It doesn't mean there's no feedback from boards. Obviously, the library board, um, has taken a formal process. So we've incorporated that into C I P that we recommend to you. But we've done so without recommending the funding source that they would like to fund it with. So to just point that out that, that, that you have several works, few impressions. Obviously, I'd relate the use when pretty involved in doing great reviews and bases and some of these infrastructure projects and discussions. So their feedback is now about, you know, we haven't sprayed every single plane, every minute of every meeting to make sure we've got everything in. We do rely on the council to help us with console. So to the extent you think we missed something that, that's an obvious priority, then we take no offense to be raising that with us publicly or privately saying, why is this in there? Why we've had it, um, if you can talk through that. And then the fire station is a rapidly developing situation. Um, initially our funding, our, our hopes for funding, our hopes for a chance of getting funding were lower. But we were looking for a higher number. We now are feeling more confident that we will get funding, but it will be at a lower dollar than what we had hoped. So there's good and bad in that, and there's some discussions about how we should proceed. I don't know what you, what has been included in the draft. G O for everything? Yes, it's just, yeah. So what we were, what I had asked Josh to do or think about in some of that was included is not to get into the weeds on city versus rural or grant, federal grant versus G O borrowing. The highest probability of funding this would be some amount of grants and some amount of. It's unlikely that the partners, including us and the rural, are going to cash it out. You know, we're going to come up with money. If grants are less than one point five million, then, then I would suggest to you that would be a G O borrowing. Go up. And then we would have to negotiate a funding mechanism with the rural association to pay us back over a ten to fifteen year period, likely through their contract with us. I think it's unlikely that they're going to say, we'll just pay and water shit out on the cap, bench. This model wouldn't model that and certainly they could do that and would impact our fiscal forecast. Um, we have also, um, not been aggressive about, even knowing that we have this possibility for federal grants and even understanding that our role markers are interested in proceeding with a project. We haven't assumed it started tomorrow. So it's still, you're still looking at planning, design, when something will gain. Um, that could be accelerated based on what we can negotiate and then find out from the feds, but, um, but I hope that makes sense. So we haven't, we're not counting intergovernmental revenues necessarily. I don't know if he did, he did do any revenue back on the, maybe do thirty five percent revenue back on the G O bonding.
So the model right now, being. I didn't change, um, you know, the five hundred thousand designed in twenty seven, we grant funded, but the rest being borrowed in twenty eight. And we were assuming obviously the city being responsible for their share of it with rural fire to be determined. Um, I think the numbers I provided to council, it did include rural fire borrowing with their share upfront. So we, we can re, we'll retweak as needed.
So, you know, we'll have to keep examining, like Josh mentioned earlier in the presentation. This is a macro level. We try to get to some precision in our estimates so that we can actually use it. But it may turn out to be a great bit of dollar by our station. We may also decide that we can't afford the nine million and then we need to go back to the four point five or some kind of, um, interim step with the state of the station. The council could also decide that it wants to delay all of that and we, so we have the funding and path forward for the Greenfield site, which recall is a sixteen million dollar estimate.
What?
Was, so.
Yes, it is.
So here you. So we're, we're living in a dynamic environment where these plans are in electronic format on purpose so that we can modify them as we get better information. So, so it all transparency is, you know, this is how we got to what we're going to. I, I always reserve the right to represent you all and the community with the finance director. And I suspect there'll be some, some additional modifications that I suggest. But I have reviewed and looked at what we've got here. We, um, it's, we can accomplish it, but it doesn't, doesn't be, it doesn't mean our goals for boarding Hoffman and Glen Park lands. Um, and it's pretty shallow on its ability to support prior to the, you know, within the first five years. Any kind of recommit. Despite whatever we come up with as community, there is, we haven't assumed an extra ten million in there to, to fulfill whatever dream we have for, for downtown, although you saw just, you know, kind of.
Level ahead of basic level, reconstruction of Main Street is pretty substantial. So building edge to building edge from, I don't know what we defined as downtown, likely from, um, the door over the dish and dish to all dish or spring or animal. Maybe even all the way to Cascade, depending on what we decide to envision there. That's almost eight billion dollars. But I don't want people to think, oh, eight million's there, that's fine. That's through bridges and the entries and a new this, and that's not anticipated.
What's the, is there, is the clock ticking on this federal grant? I mean, we have to make a decision by a certain time.
It has not been awarded yet. So we are still in legislative process.
But I mean, if, if they were to, we, they think you have to use this by.
It was likely to be okay with just using, starting the client with design. Acquisition of design would likely require to get, to go in on the funding and that would have three years or whatever. But, you know, that's the advice we've been given by merchant acting there, that you don't do an R P or design and engineering, but people start of the project. design and engineering, but people start of the project satisfied the federal. Um, it's kind of much to your fiscal demands, but I'm sure they're changing a whole bunch of stuff rapidly. So it's possible that there's some caveat that we don't know.
They could, they could literally say this is allocated when it's in fiscal year or whatever and you need to spend it by the state. I don't think that's. So due to the competitive nature of grants, does Merchant MacIntyre, they ever recommend this kind of holding up in some cases like this?
Oh, that was something we certainly discussed with them. I mean, we discussed. It's that burger pan thing. Um, so we'll have to determine if, if we are successful in getting an overall amount, but it is told, you know, you're awarded. Um, certainly the top congressman and senator's office are going to want to know, are we having press releases or not? Um, and if we are awarded a small amount and they do a press release and then we say no, there's consequences to that. To understand the current amount of money that is in the bill is less than the money we told them we, we may be able to proceed. So they already have the caution. They know that we, we had a higher minimum of funding required to proceed with our project. So, but we don't want, we don't want to eliminate our chances. They have asked us a couple of times in the process, do you want to quit? So to speak, this was the legislative office. And we said, no, let's keep proceeding. Do your best for us. And apparently there's still an opportunity somehow for the senator to increase the amount that the house has. So I don't honestly, the process would be, but the senators requested not get included in the egg bill. So now her attention will be on the house bill and trying to modify, increase it otherwise make sure we get something through that in, in operation representative's office. But there is a possibility that we just say, that's not enough for us to proceed that um, with anything, or we also could scale the project back. Understanding that there may be more flexibility in the project scaling up here in the short term. Um, for the example, I'll give you the example of UDA when we got the grant for the innovation center. They awarded us a mount slightly less than we thought, than we had requested. But with the caveat that we could not modify the scope. We essentially delivered thirty-two thousand square foot innovation center on that lot with those costs to get any of the money. The earmark process appears that we could. It's, the money is more generally allocated for a fire station, a remodel project in River Falls. So potentially we're not going to be able to do a one point four million project with a one point four million dollar grant, but we may be able to negotiate with them if it's awarded at some lower amount. And lower than the nine million. Understanding our current commitment to the congressman and senator is that we expect an eight point five million dollar project and here's what we expect to deliver. So we need to be thoughtful about that too. We haven't changed the scope of the project yet.
You know, helping, we're driving the cost of everything.
Probably that for you, like officially coming up. Staff will work hard, fit to make the best of the project again. And there is a little bit of, so build. Bobo, I can't remember what it's called. Build America, build. Uh, trying to think of the name of that and now that, you know, we'll have some requirements we would not otherwise have with project that needs some money.
Will be needed again now.
We'd like to know why would the council want? Should we use a second for chapter C I D?
I think we need to. I'd like to go through all this page by page. So I can, I can ask questions.
I think you typically operate. Overview, book, opportunity for public comment. Um, most of these commission chairs typically take a look at the.
Still getting questions to Josh or you or both or?
Um, I would suggest that the most efficient way is for all of you to recommend it to the finance director. It's fine if you send them my way and we should get. And I'm sure you, I know what. We appreciate any, any information ahead of time, but you also can just save them all for the next workshop. Unless, you know, we're active as best we can. So that's, that's up to the council. You should not be meeting with each other specifically about advocating a certain project. That would, I would, I would save that for a workshop or the public meeting. You certainly can get each other's advice, but you all know how, you know, thoughtful to be in the public's business and look.
Hands up for staffs, please.
Yeah, we certainly can, they, they may, you may find the mirrors in that detail. We're providing some basic descriptions and project justifications and you may find that's inadequate. You just say, well, the project on page twenty-one. What does it mean? I don't understand what you're talking about. Can I get a map? And to that extent, too, if you feel that you understand that public would not likely understand it and you want us to add something that hates their order, we have to stick the project. If that's fine too. So come back for us. Um, there, there should not be a significant amount for any surprises. I don't don't think there was a lot. Hey, we have this green. We, we didn't feel as staff that we really had that flexibility getting given the fiscally identified priorities of the areas. It was when we were creative or innovative approaches. We're not trying to fund new service levels that I recall. We're not. We're not trying to set up new, new companies or funds within the city and capitalize on it's, it's pretty much, um, in lines and lines of maintenance and replacement, wipes and wires and.
Josh, any comment on the formatting? Is there any?
I mean, we have some ability to do additional reforming and resort and change. You have projects and funding sources by department. You have a funding source summary. There's detailed pages for every project. There's some, this one detailed project. This is not the extent of the detail that we have available to us to provide for any of those projects. There's probably some of these, you might say, where's the rest of the discussion? You might say, well, what's this? But for the most part, there's additional work that's going on. I, the other project I can think of that was of council interest specifically that was asked by more than one council person. Discussing directly was body worn canvas. I don't believe we have, don't believe we've funded in the five years. Body worn camera installation, which would be over the capital and operating. So that is one we may have to, that is also a dynamically changing item that we cannot see in this graph, that we may have to figure out a way to, to give yours, give the community the option to consider that of putting something in the scenario. The, the challenging part of that is it's, it's not as easy in my mind. Everything issues might do the side as easy as, we can't just put the cap over it. We've, we've got, we have to contemplate what she has already done and provided me a report on what's the operating impact. Not to mention the, the. So is there some, is there any other project that you're pretty sure I didn't fund, but that you were interested in? I must have done this. So I apologize if I weren't him. Just one that I know people are going to ask me about. Um, and that was not one of my knowledge in the five years. I don't want it. It's not evident. I'll look. We probably have a detailed page somewhere where if you started to try to figure it out. I don't think it's made into the. I'm not sure that it's even in, in your scott, just because you alluded to the operating impact discussion. And I think we all recognize that's just a conversation we need to have before we put it in and more clearly.
And the bigger overall budget question, the changes to shared revenue. So that's going to help. Um, and where my, uh, where can, where can we expect to see any?
So where you will see the effect of the shared revenue is in the fiscal plan, primarily on the operating side of things. So what it allows us to do is provide some levy relief and how we would have been. So what you'll see is there's kind of a before and after. There's the before shared revenue. You would see more of a levy burden there. And the after, you're going to see likely the same level of funding uses with more of the funding sources now come to a lot of levy and from shared revenue. The other, the other thing that Scott and I have been discussing is this really creates a new dynamic that Wisconsin cities don't even ever and don't deal with as far as having shared revenue indexed to sales tax, which by definition is a volatile revenue source because it's tied to the economy. During recessionary periods, you may see less consumer spending, less sales tax, less revenue coming through then. So one of the things we talked about doing too is setting aside some portion of that revenue every year. Um, I believe we call it a sales tax stabilization reserve. So you'll see that in the model moving forward as a new feature too.
We can let her, we can let her rip. That's not the recommendation.
Right. My recommendation is we can, we can plot sales tax in states history. We can look at the average increase. We can look at how many years out of ten it decreases and we can make some reasonable assumptions about. We don't have to play dumb. We have good data. Let's just figure it out. It looks like it's actually not that bad. I mean, over a ten year period, it was like one, one down year. Um, it may be reasonably that's three-ish percent increase a year annually. And then that downturn might be ten percent reduction in the one year. And so you may only even put two or three percent of the new shared revenue away each year to be able to level that bad year. So the state says, I want to take in a hundred thousand dollars away, but you don't, you don't, you only have to have five percent, five hundred dollars you can put away to the. Built to get out of it. We didn't see a whole lot of sustained losses either. I mean, that was good things. When it dies, it dies. And then it comes back up. So you don't have to stabilize for like four years. Um, you just need to get through that blip in your revenue. Um, the other thing is I, I suspect we'll have significant discussion. Josh and I first and then maybe the, um, council, depending on your priorities. Uh, should a percentage of that be for capital and for the coordination? So if it's, if that is your next priority funding and if we are challenged to identify a reasonable revenue source, should we look at fiscal plan benchmarks and take, should we say seventy-five percent of the revenue is capital and twenty-five percent for operating? Provides challenge to operating, which we already talked about, has a lot of pressure on it. But it may be the kind of discipline we just have to do with that project that we want to receive, whether the council will do it. So, you know, it's got to be between three hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars a year debt service depending on whether we go fifteen or twenty year amortization. And depending on a bunch of assumptions about grants and rural associations. So five hundred and thirty-three thousand is the increase supplemental. Uh, that, that's protected by the legislative fiscal bureau. So you could, you could take three seventy-five, four hundred, four twenty-five that to do. Now, if I'm a library board member, I can also make the argument that we should do this, you know, just on the library. Challenge for library board members is supplemental is specifically um, supposed to go to public safety streets. So if you want to, it doesn't mean we can't supply it. It's money we can move, you know, staff can help you spend money on the library if you want to. But if you wanted to pull the spirit of supplemental revenue, using it for fire station capital is a lot easier to justify given that legislature exists. Then moving money from the library, you know, from that to library and moving other funding that you're going to spend things to, to backfill it. So, um, it's a good problem to have that we haven't had twenty years. So, um, that's, that's the good news is that we can start to have that discussion. The other good news for us and the rural fire tomorrow um, is that they all receive supplemental revenue also. Um, a couple of them, very significant supplemental revenue on a percentage of our capital basis. Um, to expect that there they essentially were helped as much as we were by this. Question, the reason that I asked of them is, do you also like to put some of that money towards capital? Is this the solution we've been looking for to adequately, um, outfit our fire station for the next ten, fifteen years? So that's, that's good news. I guess I didn't jump over the wrong, maybe seem like, but that's what we do. It's an opportunity that I, I would say advise you that you had the last time we had the cap. Recall, we were thinking a few million, meaning five or six million in twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty is what we could afford for a fire station. If we didn't do parks and other things that we've not, you know, we've set our lower priorities. Getting pretty close to having a reasonable way forward on eight and a half to nine million dollar remodel. In the federal potential and the supplemental share revenue. So that's, that's good. I mean, cities matter and it's good that we're starting to have some working options for our members. So thanks to Josh and all the team, I don't know, Christine, our financial analysts do a lot of work. Um, we get, we pulled in folks from all over, Jason, um, Stroud had a big, big role in, uh, getting us organized and off running and saying, you know what, at the front on some things that helped. Help make it cheaper and easier to get to our, our number. Um, and, and so, um, I think it's reasonable to say we're proud of where we're at. There's, this is a pretty hefty capital plan. And relative to our world resources and what we expected to have for resources to, to make progress. This, this five years from now, you, you should be pretty proud of what you've accomplished with approving that, knowing that we're also okay if you want to stay in the back. It's too much risk. Or if you think it's inadequate to advance it, then we will have to talk about ultimately brackets because I don't think we can just kind of create. You likely have to go to you, I think you'd likely have to go to a referendum if you want to really put a bunch more emphasis into the capital. Um, because I don't think I could recommend putting operating by fifteen percent in order to free up capital money. Your operating is is challenging off to meet the service demands. Um, if you want to do more capital, ask people for more money, I think. And the only way we can really do that in Wisconsin right now is through a referendum. So that's not going to be a threat or any kind of dampening of your enthusiasm. Just don't, don't have the expectation that you're going to have to read more than five million dollars. It's, it's no big deal. Um, it, because we're starting already with two point, which is library. Point five. I mean, we're already saying two point five million of requests we think are reasonable. And, and will not be recommended for funding with any levy. It's all, if the community wants to do those projects, we can put them here. Yeah, it gives the council the ability to. Yeah, it gives the council ability to give the green light for the projects. But it has to be a hundred percent fundraised.
We have a longer break.